Good morning, everyone. The October 2nd, 2019 meeting of the City Council is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open-meeting law. These proceedings are being video-recorded as well as presented live on KCLV Cable Channel 2. Our closed caption for hearing impaired viewers. Please note, customers of CenturyLink Cox Communication may be viewed this program in high-definition on Channel 1002 and in standard-definition on Channel 2. You may also watch this meeting live on Apple TV, Roku, Amazon Fire TV, on the Go-Vegas app. The City Council meeting, as well as all other KCLV programming, may be viewed on the Internet at www.kclv.tv/live. The proceedings will be rebroadcast on KCLV Channel 2 and the web the Wednesday of the meeting at 8:00 p.m., Friday at 4:00 a.m., Saturday at 7:00 p.m., Sunday at 7:00 a.m., and the following Monday at 5:00 p.m. This building is protected by state-of-the-art fire-detection-and-suppression sprinkler systems. If alarms should activate during today’s meeting, please evacuate using the exits at the back of the chambers, go out with the mezzanine, proceed out the double doors to the terrace, go down the back staircase. For anyone who has difficulty with stairs, please check with a marshal or fire official for assistance. Once outside, please assemble on the northeast corner across the street from City Hall at Lewis and First Streets. Employees wearing safety vests or city marshals will inform you when it’s safe to re-enter the building. For public comment-related items on the agenda, citizen participation and public hearing items, we have available a speaker card which you may complete and submit to the city clerk up front. Cards are available online in the clerk’s office or at the rear of these chambers. If you do not submit a card, it does not prevent you from speaking under public comments, citizen participation, or specified public hearing items. If anyone is present today who has need for hearing impaired equipment, please come forward and see our clerks up front. Please note, if you parked in the parking garage across the street, the new flash parking self-validation machine is located in the foyer between council chambers and the security desks you walk through to enter these chambers. You must have your ticket with you to use this machine. If you don’t have a ticket, see the security personnel when exiting for a validation coupon. Before we proceed with our agenda, would everyone please rise for the invocation given by Dr. S.S. Rogers, the Greater Mount Sinai, M.R.M.I. Inc., and please remain standing for the pledge.
May bow heads. O gracious Father, Holy One, knows by many names, and beyond all names, Spirit of life, Spirit of life, Spirit of community, Spirit of justice, we ask you to bless on this day these people, the City Council, for our communities in which we live, working and play. Help them to lead, not to ask first how we can fix this, but what do we need to learn how we might fix it, how the changes may come, to whom we do need to listen to. Remind them, because we all forget from time to time, especially in the nosiness of what passion the politics debates today, that they are not only leaders but also servants, and it may be the responsibility of our councils to make the right decision. Along with our mayor, we thank you, we pray for the residents of the city and our community. We also observe our Constitution. We serve for all these seeking to fulfill the meaning of employment. We pray for jobs increase. For those who seek education, we pray for powerful councilmen, powerful mayor, powerful councilman everywhere. For all of these seek the peace, the training, the work of justice, we thank you. Holy One, bless now the work of this City Council today. May the decision be made, every phone call, every pickup, every email, every respond that they may do, and the generosity of the Spirit. This again, rendering the hearts, remind us of the truth of Jeremiah, with that in the welfare of the city, we will find our own welfare in all we do and all we say, may we seek the welfare of this city. Las Vegas, Nevada, in the name of the Father, in the name of the Son, in the name of the Holy Ghost and the Holy Spirit, in Jesus’ name we pray, and everyone says, “Amen.” Praise God.
And we will be coming down now for our ceremonials. Do you think we care about the Golden Knights in this city? But I think I have to talk to our administrative staff. The colors today and forever in Las Vegas are certainly black, that’s for sure, and — oh, you pass, gold, right, your necktie, right? Mayor Pro Tem certainly is decked out, as is Councilwoman Seaman, and — oh, how about Mr. Creer here? Wow! That’s vintage Vegas sweatshirt. I think it’s the first I’ve ever seen it.
Yeah, it’s my version of Mayor Pro Tem’s bling.
It’s your bling. And of course, Councilman Anthony has his black suit on and his matching proper shoes, so you’re good, and your tie sort of reeks, though. Okay. So, and look here, Councilwoman Diaz, wow, really, Ann. Okay, so, well, I mean, since you’re right on, this morning, we start off with you. You have the Citizen of the Month.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I do, but before we get to the Citizen of the Month presentation, I wanted to acknowledge that from September 15th through October 15th, our nation celebrates Hispanic Heritage Month, recognizing the wonderful contributions made and the important presence of Hispanics and Latin Americans in the United States. Our October Citizen of the Month is Isela Gutierrez, and she has prepared a performance for us in honor of Hispanic Heritage Month. However, before I have her performance and presentation come down here before us, I do want to acknowledge the hard work of our own city employees, who have organized a committee, have put together events for enjoyment of our citizens, and we would be remiss, as a council and the mayor, to not acknowledge the hard work of our people that make us look so good every day. So, I’d like to invite Rocío Martínez and the organizing team that have participated in all the events. Some of us attended the coffee across the street at the downtown Las Vegas Starbucks. That was them in the works. This past weekend, we went and we touched up a neighborhood in my ward with fresh paint on the hydrants and the curbs, and we are also going to put the cherry on top. On October 12th, we will have a culminating event. It will be a family fiesta at the East Las Vegas Community Center, and we hope everybody tuning in can come and partake in the festivities and just celebrate with us the amazing contributions of our Hispanic folks. So, I would like Rocío to just say a few words on behalf of the team.
Well, thank you very much. I wasn’t prepared to speak today, but thank you, Councilwoman, Mayor, and members of the council. I think I can speak on behalf of the Hispanic Heritage Month Committee, that we’re very appreciative to have the empowerment from our leadership to plan events like this and to really be inclusive and let everybody know that the City of Las Vegas plans events for everybody out in our community, so thank you.
So, let’s give them a round of applause for their efforts. Thank you. And so, with that, Mayor, I’m going to invite you and the City Council to come have a seat, so we can enjoy the wonderful magnificent performance that Isela Gutierrez has prepared for us today. Con eso voy a invitar a que la alcaldesa y el consejo tomen asiento para disfrutar de esta magnifica presentación que nos ha preparado la maestra Isela Gutierrez.
(Applause) (Music) 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 Bravo, viva! We are celebrating the Hispanic Month with Asociación Amigos Salvadorinos with Director Rainer Kennedy. Escaramuza, Chara, Colibrida, Nerrada, Director Judith Pinedo, Porcaria. Conjunto Voltiario con mi tierra es Canarán, Elvia, Escalles, con la tradicional Pollera Blanca, Estersania, con las tradicionales Molas Panameñas, Reina Conga, representando la cultura congá de la ciudad del Colombia. El grupo Folclor Congo, Panama, Las Vegas, Directora Mayani Green. Ecuador, Noa Uribe, Rosa Linda Castillo, del club ecuatoriano en Las Vegas y Ecuador, y Ashley Galvez. Tenemos a la Asociación de migrantes de Irua, Michoacán, Anelito Díaz, a Fernanda Pineda, Ariana Rodríguez, y de la Fundación Cultural de Venezuela, Adalia Suárez, Blanda Rica, Panamá, Nicaragua, en Zambador, Honduras, Guatemala, Perú, Brasil, Colombia, Chile, Argentina, Uruguay, Paraguay, Bolivia, Ecuador, Venezuela, para todos los venezolanos entrando con la frontera, con los pies mojados, Cuba. (Music) 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 (Music)
Thank you, Isela, muchas gracias. I would like the mayor and the council to come and join me, so that we can now go to the next part of our ceremonials, which is to acknowledge the hard work of our Citizen of the Month, but I wanted you all to see the colorful, vibrant warmth of our Latin American countries. I mean, we have Ecuador, Peru, Panama, Venezuela, El Salvador, and Mexico. Panama, Peru, and — I think I — there are so many, I can’t capture all of them, but I think the ones that are represented here today, I want to say thank you to all of you for being here. This makes this meeting special to us, but even more special to me is the person that I chose to be my Citizen of the Month. You see, this woman has been basically making sure that we do acknowledge Hispanic heritage, not only during Hispanic Heritage Month, but she’s been doing it for decades. She landed in this valley in the 90s. There weren’t very many folkloric dance troupes in the city of Las Vegas at the time she arrived. She came from Mexico City. She used to admire, at the tender age of 11, all of the dancers that she would watch on the fabulous stages there in Mexico City, and she knew from that age that that’s what she wanted to do for the rest of her life. She wanted to dance, and she wanted to partake in the fabulous cultural activities that she saw before her eyes. And so, when she arrived here in the 90s, she saw there wasn’t really much of that happening in Las Vegas, and she took it upon herself to start Mexico Vivo Dance Company, which has seen many iterations of folks coming through, like myself. I see these young ladies, and it reminds me that I wasn’t there that far back, and I was one of her students at one time. And so, her work is so impactful, so powerful, it really ensures that these young ladies are bilingual. I love that they’re singing in Spanish and their native, you know, language, that they’re taking to their cultural pride, and that makes us just stronger and more vibrant as a community. And so, with that, she’s also done fabulous things. She put together the World Folk Fest, and she brought it to our downtown, and she organized that World Folk Fest 16 times, 16 years, and that was economic diversity. She was bringing dancers from around the world here to partake in that World Folk Fest and showcase our local talent and for others to showcase their talent. And so, with that, Isela, thank you so much for everything you’ve done for the city of Las Vegas, to make sure that we grow up seeing our cultural identity represented, our cultural roots shared by, you know, with the community, and just your labor of love, because you put your heart and soul into it, and you haven’t changed from the day I’ve met you, your passion. I call and I reach out, I have this vision for this meeting, and she just puts it together, and she doesn’t question it, right? That’s just her labor of love for all of us. So, Isela, with that, on behalf of the mayor and the City Council of Las Vegas, I’d like to recognize you as October Citizen of the Month for your trailblazing work in the cultural arts.
Oh my God, thank you very much. Thank you. 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 It’s a big honor. I have been in Las Vegas for more than 30 years, and it has been an honor not to be here serving the culture, and thank you very much. I really appreciate it, and thank you to each country. Viva Latino America and viva Las Vegas. Thank you so much. Thank you. And viva Isela Gutierrez. (Applause) 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 And for our next item, Councilman Knutson, this is your day as well.
Thank you, Mayor. This is not my day. No days are my day. I get the distinct honor and privilege of recognizing the importance of Fire Prevention Week, and so I'm going to ask our amazing and wonderful firefighters to come on down, and I have a couple of words, then I'm going to really turn the mic over to our chief and fire marshal, Robert Nolan. So I have the privilege of discussing the importance of Fire Prevention Week. Since 1922, the National Fire Protection Association has sponsored the public observance of Fire Prevention Week. In 1925, President Calvin Coolidge proclaimed Fire Prevention Week a national observance, making it the longest-running public health observance in our country. The goal of Fire Prevention Week is to provide lifesaving public education in an effort to drastically decrease casualties caused by fire. Fire Prevention Week is observed each year during the week of October 9th in commemoration of the great Chicago fire, which began on October 8th in 1871 and caused devastating damage. This horrific conflagration, I hope I said that right, that's a really big word. Conflagration, Mayor. Conflagration. So this is vocabulary, that's, conflagration. Yes. That fire destroyed more than 17,400 structures and had more than 250 people without life, and 100,000 people homeless. It's an important observation so that we recognize the damage that fire can cause to our lives and our community. This year's Fire Prevention Week campaign, "Not Every Hero Wears a Cape: Plan and Practice Your Escape," works to educate everyone about the small but important actions they can take to keep themselves and those around them safe. As a father of a four-year-old, my four-year-old loves firefighters, and he doesn't need a cape, but he loves seeing the fire trucks, he loves seeing the fire helmets, and I think it's important that, as children, we recognize the need to have heroes in our community. I am grateful for the fire department here in Las Vegas, and Clark County, and Henderson and North Las Vegas, and for every firefighter across the country that helps keep us safe, because when you call and you need help, it's the fire department that comes to extend a hand and bring you back to safety. So I'm grateful, and I'll turn the mic over to our wonderful and amazing fire chiefs. You're all chiefs.
Thank you, Councilmember Knutson, thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. I just wanted to echo the words of Councilmember Knutson, that fire prevention awareness is so important, and I think the thing that really want to bring home is, is that the safety in your home is really something that we really need to bring awareness to, because that's where most of our fire deaths occur, is the place where we feel the most safe, the place where we should be the most safe, but it's also the place where we have the most injuries and deaths. And so our interest is to make sure that we provide information to our community about how to keep yourself safe in your home, make sure that you have a working smoke alarm in your home, make sure you have good escape routes, make sure your entire family knows all of the dangers that they could face in the event that there is a fire in your home, and just make sure that we protect our community and protect our citizens. We are having an open house this weekend, and it is in Ward 1 at Fire Station Number 6 on Oki and Torrey Pines, hope that all of you can, excuse me, the 12th, October 12th. Hope you can all come out, and I'd like to give the mic over to our fire marshal, who'd like to say a few words about Fire Prevention Week. Thank you, sir.
Well, thank you very much. In going back 20 years, over 50 people have lost their lives within our city limits, and almost all of them in residential structures, either apartments or single-family homes. So we have a very aggressive apartment community risk-reduction team, and we are actively trying to put free smoke alarms into people's homes, particularly the older homes where there's no smoke alarms whatsoever. To date, we've installed over 300 of these, and each time we do those visits, we educate people about trip-and-fall hazards, prescription drug safety, and anything else that we can do to make them safer in the home where they should feel the safest. Our open house is at Station 6, October 12th, from 9 to noon. That's the CSN campus on Oki and Torrey Pines. We'll be having dynamic displays of firefighting skills in the afternoon, as it will be a pancake breakfast, and there'll be static displays of our fire safety house, but that's just part of the festivities, starting with our proclamation today. We are also going to be bringing back our well-received Pizza Hut and smoke alarm delivery. We'll be focusing on Ward 1, October 7th, Monday, October 7th, Ward 3, Wednesday, October 9th, and on Friday, October 11th, Ward 5. The reason we picked those wards is they have the older homes where the battery operates, smoke alarms are more appropriate. The other wards have hardwired smoke alarms, and then we get electrician for you when you need those. So anyone who orders a Pizza Hut, a pizza, from the Pizza Hut on Decatur and Meadows, will get a delivery, get their pizza delivered from a fire engine, hopefully from the council offices. I think we've reached out to you, and if you would like to participate, you get to ride captain that night, visit a household in your ward, and if you're, if you let us come in and check your smoke alarm, we buy the pizza, and we do have to pay for it, they don't give them to us for free. It's a great partnership with Pizza Hut, it's a great sponsorship, a great partnership with our council ward, and I hope that people will take advantage of that, and we can get out and install some smoke alarms on October 7th, October 9th, and October 11th. So thank you very much for this proclamation, and I would just like to observe that it is a passing of the torch where Ward 1 sponsors the proclamation. Thank you.
And I would like to do a picture with the proclamation, we can do it with the podium here, I'm told. We don't have to move it, Jase. For anybody that has children out there, four-year-olds, three-year-olds, two-year-olds, that will love fire trucks, probably five-year-olds, but I'm not there yet, but I'm super excited to bring my son to the fire station on Saturday morning, next Saturday morning, at Pancake Breakfast. There's giveaways for the kids, and they get to see fire trucks, so I'm going to be the best dad ever, and we will deliver as many, as many fire alarms as we can, so I appreciate the opportunity. Can we do a quick picture?
You are going to be a famous daddy. Are they ready, though? Are they ready for Andrew? Get ready for Andrew! Get ready for Andrew, he's coming. Anyway, this concludes our ceremonials, and so we'll take a brief break of five minutes to get technology up with us human beings, and for those of you who'd like a picture, I'll be right over here, and we'll do that. And thank you, Reverend Rogers, thank you for your inspiring words and for joining us this morning.